City Council Agenda for this Tuesday, February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. I now call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Bokey?
Here.
Councilmember Branstadter?
Here.
Councilmember Farmer?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss? And Mayor Whalen?
Present.
You have a quorum?
Well, thank you very much. If you'd please stand in place and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance to our flag, followed by a moment of silence for men and women serving here and abroad. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic.
Republic for which it stands.
One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you for that. We now will turn to our proclamation and presentation portion of tonight's agenda. And tonight, we're pleased to have a business showcase, which will be featured with our Communications Manager, Jim Kopriva, along with his video highlights of the Lakewood City Pub and Crumble Cookie. So, Mr. Kopriva, if you would lead us through the business showcase.
Thanks very much. All right, I'll share my screen here. Let's see, share sound. Okay, all right, you can see what I see now?
Yes.
All right, good. Here we go. So, some interesting news. I think lately, we've been seeing a great positive trend in net business growth. Seven hundred and thirty-two new businesses were approved in Lakewood last year. That's a net growth of one hundred and thirty-eight, and just an incredible indicator of the strength of entrepreneurship and business development in Lakewood despite the circumstances, right? And two such examples that the community's been buzzing about include the opening of Crumble Cookie in the town center, and of course, the reopening of the Lake City Pub over in the Lake City neighborhood. So, I paid a visit to both, and I'll play a visit, I'll play the video for you now.
After the two years.
Lakewood ended two thousand and twenty-one with one hundred and thirty-eight more businesses than it started with. Two thousand and twenty-two, off to a great start. Openings and reopenings are happening all over town.
So, we reopened probably about the end of December, and it was after the two years of being closed for COVID. It was almost, yeah, just about two years. And in the meantime, I rejuvenated the menu. I spent all this time fixing up and doing all the beautiful things that I always wanted to do that, when you own a bar, you really don't have time to do. Seven years ago, I came with the idea of loving food and drink, period, and I wanted to bring something special. People are happy. They love to have something out here.
We're right in front of Crumble Cookies, who just opened today. So, very excited. It's our first gourmet cookie store here in Lakewood. The one thing about the hospitality industry and the food and beverage industry is that they are resilient. They work so very hard, and it's all about their customers. And I was, I was so excited to see them make the investment, to take the chance here in Lakewood, that they made the decision to just come and do it. And so, here we are.
Anyway, just an exciting time in Lakewood, you know, with all the challenges for the food industry, to see some new faces open the doors and reopen them, and to see customers in both, and people excited about both, and lines forming at both. Just a good sign of things to come, hopefully, as we come out the other side of this pandemic.
Well, thank you very much for that. And I have to say that I am enjoying the video aspect of these business showcases. I think it's wonderful for the public, especially during these virtual council meetings, because they really get more of a chance to see and experience what you are all seeing on the ground. So, thanks again, Mr. Kopriva, for the business showcase. Any comments, folks, other than to say congratulations to our business owners and a virtual round of applause to their grand opening for Crumble Cookie? And I look forward to seeing both the Lake City Pub owner and the Crumble Cookie franchise owners soon. Next, we turn to our public comment section of tonight's agenda. Public comments are accepted by mail or email or by live virtual comment. Comments may be sent in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Breonna Schumacher, at her city email address, be schumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received one hour up before the meeting have been provided to the city council electronically, and I'll ask the clerk to read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance if we have so received them.
Mayor Whalen, we received no comments in advance of this evening's meeting.
Very good. Thank you. For virtual comments, again, those of you who are here tonight, if you'd like to provide live virtual public comments, you are to join the Zoom meeting as an attendee, and typically, we post that information on a screenshot. But if you're orally listening in, I can read it to you. You can dial in via telephone at the number two-five-three-two-one-five-eight-seven-eight-two, or you can certainly go on Zoom and enter the meeting ID number eight-six-eight-seventy-two-sixty-three-twenty-three-seventy-three, and the meeting ID numbers, just as I've indicated. Please raise your hand, using the raise your hand feature to be called upon, and we will allow three minutes for public comment. We do ask that you direct the comments to the city council as a whole, and not to or directed at any one individual city council person. So, at this time, I will have the city clerk call on those who have raised their virtual hand to start us tonight with public comment.
The first person with their hand raised is LaScinta Immortalis.
Yes.
My name is LaScinta Immortalis. I'm the Minister of Finance for the Panther Party. I'd like to start off saying that your disregard for the environment and the decision against protecting the Gary Oaks is disgusting. You say that your assessor misinterpreted the law, but maybe it is your own indifference that is not properly aligned. Your greed is the only thing that is breaching on criminal. And speaking of criminal indifference, I would like to talk about Said Joaquin and the justice that he hasn't received. More specifically, I'd like to talk about why. Is it because nobody on this council has pushed for his case to be dusted off from the desk of Mary Robnett? You say you're following the process, but the process is criminal and racist. It is the fact that Mary Robnett is purposely brushing this case to the side while she seeks reelection. Is it because Mark Zarro would rather build meaningless art projects with his buddy Mike Wiley instead of seeing him behind bars? Or is it because Mike Wiley is on the brink of retirement, and you all want to let him relax for the rest of his life? Which reason is it? Is it all of them? The problem is, all of these reasons are criminal. The fact that Said Joaquin still has not received justice is criminal. And it leaves me wondering why we are seeing so much criminal activity from the people that are supposed to stop crime. Did you guys forget how? You have been killing people in the streets for so long, have you forgot how to do anything else? Stop this criminal disregard of murder. Stop this criminal cover-up of murder. Stop helping a murderer. Do your jobs and get the murderer behind bars. All power to the people.
Next?
Dennis Haugen.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Dennis Haugen here from Sioux Falls, South Dakota. You know, the you know, I spent about several days volunteering on a petition drive for Kristi Noem's. It's just a procedure that has to be done. Kristi Noem, our governor's second term. I'm going to different kind of shows and stuff. I've talked to maybe five or six hundred people from different states. And so many people are just so they wonder, you know, the question. During the riots, when it's government's first responsibility to protect property and people, like Seattle and Minneapolis, very similar, didn't call in the National Guard right away and put down the riots and protect the people, some of who were killed by the rioters. Our governor, on the other hand, you know, took advantage of all of her options, including intelligence gathering by the federal government. And when they arrived here, they were ready. And she made it very clear that protesting is legal. And you can say anything and do anything you want, except if you throw a rock. Pick up a rock and break a window, hurt somebody, you are a felon, and you will be tried as such. And any emotional feelings about whatever you're protesting about will be disregarded. So consequently, showing the rest of the country how to do it, she's become a national figure. And she deserves it, because she did her job, she did it properly. But it raises the question. Governor Inslee and Governor Walz appear to have withheld protection that they could have obtained. And the question among many people is, why? Why aren't they being charged with some form of murder? Because it was their job? And this is nothing like the Gary Oaks people are talking about. That is not a crime, because it is not necessarily your business to cut down Gary Oaks. You see? You're way behind, you're so far behind. And people are showing up from all over the country, looking at different states, different places to move to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haugen. Next, looks like Christina Manetti.
Hello, council members. Usually, I talk about, as you know, Gary Oaks, but today, I wanted to mention a little different aspect. You might remember the film from nineteen ninety-three, Sleepless in Seattle. Well, if I were thinking of a title for a film about Lakewood nowadays, I might, I might pick Lawless in Lakewood. I don't know, but I think every one of you who lives in Lakewood can hear it every day. It's not even just at night anymore. It's every day, any time of day. It's racing. It drives me insane. It sounds like, you know, I live on a racetrack. I hear people on Facebook mentioning, like in Springbrook, you know, that, you know, they're afraid of people's lives there, you know, it's terrible. I was a victim of this kind of reckless driving. Not because of racing, but I was taking Mrs. Wagner home after one of the council meetings in October, and I was rear-ended. Actually, the person behind me was rear-ended, and they rear-ended me. The guy didn't even brake. It was on eighty-fourth. He didn't have any insurance. It was, it was total lawlessness. People are dying because of this lawlessness. In Tacoma, like last week or so, you probably heard, eight-thirty in the morning, there was road rage. A guy, they were racing first or something, and you know, the woman has died because of it. I'm basically getting afraid to drive around Lakewood, much less Tacoma or Seattle, you know. The lawlessness goes further, you know. It's not just, it's the atmosphere. Like, when everybody hears racing going on, everybody knows, in Lakewood, anything goes. You go there, you know, who cares? They'll just race around. I never hear any sirens. I don't see people being pulled over, you know, it's just, it's a sign. You have to get this racing to stop, because it means anything goes here. It means it's lawless. The lawlessness is creeping. It's everywhere. You've got lawlessness in the way that the city itself keeps Wiley and Zarro on the police force after what happened to Leonard Thomas. The lawlessness is, is shown, manifested in the policies regarding the trees. There are guidelines, there are recommendations. The city disregards all of them, saying it's only recommendations. We don't have to abide by any of them. So, I would suggest that you somehow get a grip on this racing, because it sets a very bad tone for Lakewood. I'm embarrassed. You know, people say, like, what is going on? I say, I don't know. It didn't used to be like this. You know, I grew up here. We didn't have this. I know there's a pandemic and stuff, but these mobs of people going around racing, it can't go on. I know you can't chase them for some legal reason, but put pressure on people to change that, please, because I want to be able to drive around and not be afraid I'm gonna be smashed in the back of my car going home from a city council meeting. Anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Next, Mr. James Dunlop.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is James Dunlop, and I'm a Lakewood resident. I want to comment on the killings of Leonard Thomas and Said Joaquin. Recently, there has been a focus on Said's death and its judicial consequences. The mayor suggested that there was no need for comments and emails, because the matter was working through the system. However, this is missing the point. What happened was a catastrophe with multiple causes. We accept that Said drove through a stop sign without stopping, that he had a gun on the floor of his car, and that he didn't have a concealed carry permit. These were failures on Said's part, and they contributed to his death. However, running a stop sign and having a gun on the floor don't in themselves make it all right for someone to be killed. We have other potential failures, which might have been under the control of the city. Said was shot by Officer Michael Wiley from the Lakewood Police Department, which is led by Michael Zarro. As we know, as a result of the killing of Leonard Thomas in two thousand and thirteen, a jury awarded his family three million dollars against Michael Zarro and one-point-five million dollars against Michael Wiley. The city of Lakewood appeared not to accept the jury's verdicts. Not only did it indemnify the two officers, but it kept them on the payroll. This is shocking, remembering that according to the Seattle Times, Michael Wiley responded to the shooting by calling it a frickin' million-dollar shot. We have a city that cannot admit its culpability, which shows oppositional defiance by continuing to hire the two officers. The organizational culture that allowed Leonard, Leonard Thomas to be gunned down is therefore still in place. And in terms of Said, this oppositional defiance may have been a factor in his death. And in my mind, accepting and being part of this status quo is feeding its sickness. Someone can smile and cut ribbons as much as they like, but it won't wipe out the immorality of acquiescence. Or, as Shakespeare put it in his play Julius Caesar, "The evil that men do lives after them. The good is oft interred with their bones." Thank you.
Next, we have Ado Equitas.
Thank you.
My name's Ado Equitas. I'm the chairman of the Panther Party. At the very beginning, we, you guys opened about businesses opening. I'd be interested to hear how many of those businesses are BIPOC-owned. The two that were thrown out, obviously weren't. One of them is, you know, big corporation. That's cool. I'm glad that they're getting lines. But there's a whole string of BIPOC-owned businesses in Lakewood that are getting shut down every day. That's what we call gentrification, in case y'all didn't know. Dennis Haugen said something about, it's you guys' job to protect property and people. And I thought it was funny that he put property before people. And I think it's funny that y'all do, too. Talking about, okay, let's, let's go on to the Gary Oaks. That's just something for y'all to think about. So, the Gary Oaks, a lot's happened with them. You know, we get regular updates. And even after one of the examiners came out and said, yo, these trees should be preserved, it still doesn't seem to, to catch to y'all that this is an issue. And you tell us to trust your ad hoc committee, even though everything that you guys have done up to this point is a joke. Talking about Said Joaquin, you guys said, follow, you know, we're following the process. You made it a point to speak at the last meeting. We're following the process. We can't put pressure on. We've heard you. But the process is racist. The process is criminal in itself. So, how is following the process any less criminal? You said that you heard us, but the last time you spoke and said, we heard you, we know you're talking about, and then I didn't even know who you were talking about, because you butchered Said Joaquin's name. And you figured that you would at least be able to get his name right, because we say it so often. Everybody chants outside you guys' building, say his name, say his name. Maybe it's just a recommendation, so next time you can say it right. Put Mike Wiley in prison. Christina was talking about racing. Absolutely, go out, stop the people that are racing. Arrest them if they need to be arrested. Just don't kill them, because they don't need to die. At the very beginning of this, you guys did a Pledge of Allegiance. That's great. What are you pledging your allegiance to? Because right now, it's the people.
Thank you.
All power to the people.
Next, we have Bunchy Carter.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, you already know who I am. My name is Bunchy Carter. I'm the Minister of Defense of the Black Panther Party of Washington. I've heard some very, very eloquently said words today, both from my comrades who spoke and other people who are supporters, speaking in public comment, and also from the city council. Very eloquent words. But I'm gonna tell you one thing that I learned in an eight-year process. Eloquent words don't achieve a whole lot. The eight-year process that I'm talking about is surprisingly, the presidency of Barack Obama, there were a lot of things said, and they sounded really good coming out of his mouth. Unfortunately, not a lot of it was to the benefit of the people. Now, today, I had the extreme pleasure of being able to speak to a group of recruits about to go off to the police academy in Lakewood. And you know what I told them? I didn't even bring up Mike Wiley. Surprise, surprise. I didn't say it one time, not once. But what I did say was, we have to find a new understanding and find a new medium for the people and the police to communicate with one another. See, the real problem is, that's never gonna happen, because we don't communicate. Communication is speaking, comprehending, and then responding. But when the first thing that come out of your mouth is, but I'm not racist, well, that in itself presents a problem, because you yourself may not be racist. However, the system that you represent and that you enforce your policies or, or policies from, upon the people, that's a racist system, and everyone knows. Everyone knows systemic racism would not be a word, would not be a phrase, if people didn't know that it existed. Even something as simple as the Gary Oaks, which they say, hey, wait, 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 these trees are in danger. We should protect them. Well, the people are in danger, too. They should be protected. I don't want you to cut down the trees, but I don't want you to cut down my comrades in the street neither. See, Mr. Whalen, I got your email, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna send you a, I typed the response out, but I waited. I said, I gotta wait, because I gotta make sure I don't say anything that don't need to be said, and that I do say exactly what needs to be said. And one of the main things that needs to be said is, it's cool that y'all let us come on here every other week and speak our piece, but if you're not listening, you're not comprehending. And apparently, what we're seeing out here in the public shows that we're not getting an accurate response. Are we really communicating? Are we really? And just for the record, it's Said Joaquin. Said Asante Ray Joaquin. Rest in peace, brother. All power to the people.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the council during this public comment period? I don't see any other hands raised. Are there any other members of the public wishing to address council during the public comment period?
Mayor, we have Anzi Mobel.
Yes. It looks like Mr. or Ms. Anzi, you're next.
How are you all? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Right. My name is Nancy. I'm a member of the Black Panther Party, and my, my comment is gonna be relatively simple. I feel like, especially the case of Said Joaquin, when you look at some of the other cases, I feel like a lot of times, we are heard, as Bunchy Carter just said. We are heard, but the problem is that the issue with police is that there's just defensiveness. Like, as soon as you mention any problem with police, they instantly clam up, they get defensive, and that's a real problem, because I used to work in law enforcement out of, out of South Carolina. I came out here to watch the state. And I thought that maybe the accountability was gonna be better, because I turned up in South Carolina from a sheriff who comes up racing. He's currently in federal court, the man is sheriff of, of, of the year for the entire country. So, I come here to watch the state, and I, and I immediately meet Ed Shroyer, and that, and that, and I actually met him before he was, he was found to be, you know, a sunbag. And, and so, basically, that's what I've been finding, with the cops, they're over and over again. So, my issue is, is that, you know, you have so many cops, there's so many members of the, of, of of the community who defend cops, yet they don't, they don't seem to realize, maybe the reason why cops are hated so much in certain, in certain in certain, in certain communities is because bad cops run the show. If I can't find a single good sheriff or police chief in the world in the entire state, and if and if you got police departments like Seattle, who are under federal statutes, that they have not been in compliance with for over ten years, then it gets to the point where it's the hatred when it comes to cops, it is more than understandable. Because I'm, I'm learning from the East Coast, and I'm over here in the Pacific Northwest, and I've known the exact same thing. So, there's no counterargument to be made. The issue with cops is that it's not us that needs, needs to change, it's them. I'm tired of hearing the argument, well, 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 not all, not all, not all. Well, and the thing is, well, in the words of one of my favorite white allies, he said flat out, a cracked egg in a carton doesn't make, 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 uh, doesn't make the customer wanna, wanna basically, he said, a cracked egg in a carton doesn't make the customer wanna go and buy the whole freaking carton. So, how about you actually fix the cracked egg? But that's not the issue here. What, what will happen is, you will get one cop abuse someone, within your council, and then people around the neighborhood, they will sit there and defend that cop. And what you don't realize is that whenever you defend bad cops, it makes making an argument for good cops that much more possible, because if every time a cop is bad, you defend them, then guess what? I'm going to believe, I'm going to prove that all cops are trash. So, if you don't want people to, to criticize all cops, why don't you simply criticize the cop that you know are bad? It'd be a nice change, wouldn't it? And that's it.
Thank you. Those are all the individuals who appear to have their hands raised to address council during this public comment period. Are there any other individuals who have yet to be called on who would like to address council during the public comment period? If not, I'll declare the public comment period closed. We now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of February seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. C, motion number two thousand and twenty-two-dash-twelve, authorizing the award of a construction contract to Papen Sons Construction, Inc., in the amount of two hundred thousand for the two thousand and twenty-two stormwater repair project. D, motion number two thousand and twenty-two-dash-thirteen, authorizing the execution of an agreement with McDonald Miller in the amount of fifty-two thousand, twenty-nine dollars to implement an investment-grade audit for Lakewood City Hall. E, motion number two thousand and twenty-two-dash-fourteen, E, motion number twenty-twenty-two dash fourteen. Appointing Martin Pullman to serve on the Public Safety Advisory Committee through August sixth, twenty-twenty. Four. F, motion number twenty-twenty-two dash fifteen. Appointing L. Robin Sutton to serve on the Lakewood Arts Commission through October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. G, motion number twenty-twenty-two dash sixteen. Appointing Janet Spingath to serve on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board through September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four. H, motion number twenty-twenty-two dash seventeen. Appointing Robert Estrada to serve on the Planning Commission through December fifteenth, twenty-twenty-six. I, items filed in the Office of the City Clerk, one, Planning Commission meeting minutes of January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you. Is there any item, uh, on the consent agenda that any member of council wishes to remove for consideration at this time? If not, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
I move, uh, adoption of the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bokey, seconded by Councilmember Farmer that we adopt the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted. We now turn to the regular agenda. Mister City Manager, do we have any unfinished business to attend to?
There is none, Mayor.
How about finish, or excuse me, new business?
There is none, Mayor. Excuse me.
A light agenda, which means you probably have two hours for us on reports by the city manager.
Not, not quite, Mayor, uh, since I took up a lot of your time at the last meeting. Um, just a, a, a few items to report. Uh, the first is, uh, pleased to announce that, uh, once again, the city has been. Um, identified as a well-city by Association of Washington Cities. Like to extend, uh, uh, a hearty congratulations to our Human Resources Director, Mary McDougall, her team, and of course, our Wellness Committee for their leadership. And, uh, once again, uh, focusing on, um, employee wellness and, 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 and safety. On the legislative front, um, wanted to point out that, um. The, the House earlier this weekend, uh, released its operating budget and included in there. Is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the city had requested. Um, for a study to identify. Current facilities where state hospitals, specifically Western State and Eastern State Hospital, are releasing folks to. Um, this request by the city of Lakewood. Um, really focuses on, on, on two items. One is to demonstrate. That the current facilities where folks are being released into, particularly from Western State Hospital. Are disproportionately located, not just in Pierce County, but Lakewood as well. And then secondly, demonstrate the state's needs to invest in other facilities so that as individuals are rece- released from. For example, Western State Hospital, they're going to the appropriate facility for their care to, um, be able to, um, continue. And, uh, wanna thank our, uh, state legislators from the twenty-eighth district for, for helping with that. This now moves over to the Senate side, um, for, uh, their review and, um, consideration. And so, um, we'll continue to track this and. And keep, keep you posted of, of what's going on there. Also, um, just wanted to let you know, I'm gonna be meeting, actually myself and my team, we're gonna be meeting with the Pierce Transit. CEO and his team here in the next few weeks, uh, to talk about, uh, Bus Rapid Transit Two and coming into Lakewood. And as you know, the policy direction from the, this body is that the next round of, uh, Bus Rapid Transit. As it comes out of Tacoma, specifically the Tacoma Dome and onto South Tacoma Way and south into Lakewood. South Tacoma Way and Lakewood, and then it'll cross. Pacific Highway and come up on Pacific Highway. Um, you know, our goal is for it to continue all the way down Pacific Highway to be able to connect into Springbrook and then further down into Tillicum to be able to connect there and of course. Have access to, uh, JBLM. That is something that we have not been able to get much traction on. Uh, right now, Pierce Transit is proposing that once Bus Rapid Transit, or this is our understanding. That's the point of the meeting is to, is to, is to get some clarity on this. Is for it to then cut. As, as it crosses over, um, five-twelve onto Pacific Highway, then it'll hang a hard right on one oh eighth and then. Um, end up in the Lakewood Transit Center, which is fine, and then from there, get onto Bridgeport and. Head into, uh, University, head into University Place, which again, is great. Uh, but our concern is we would like BRT to continue further south. On Pacific Highway so that it gets into areas where folks in need of, of transportation alternatives have access to that. So. Um, just wanted to give you a heads up on that, and I'm hoping to be able to report back. Um, after our meeting, and then also Pierce Transit, um, has requested to be able to brief this body. On that sometime in March or April of, of this year, so, um, more, more, more to come. Um, and then the last update I have for you is, um, our Public Works Engineering Department. Is moving forward with, um, coordinating another treatment of alum. At, um, Wahoop Lake later this summer, and, uh, you know, this was expected after the initial treatment that occurred several years ago. And, uh, the purpose is to knock down the phosphorus levels that are currently coming back and help knock down the algae. So, um. Again, we're, um, open to be able to do that later, later this summer. And then, um, just, uh, from a calendar standpoint, I know Senator Conway was expected to. Um, have a town hall meeting, uh, tomorrow evening, however, because of his. Role as a member of the Senate Ways and Means Committee is unable to do that, so he'll be rescheduling that. Um, however, later this week, um, on the twenty-fourth, which is Thursday evening. Uh, the Boys and Girls Club is gonna be holding their annual, uh, Legacy of Hope event. It's a virtual event and, uh. It's, um, if, if you'd like to attend, let us know. We can send you to the link. Um, it is a fundraising event. It's their big item, but it's also, um, where they, um, recognize, um, the students who. Who, um, have, have just, uh, really gone above and beyond, um, not just in our community, but all in the whole South Sound area. Um, and then Habitat for Humanity is actually holding their annual fundraiser, uh, next Tuesday, March first. And that's gonna be at the Hotel Murano, um, in, in, in Tacoma. So, um, with that, Mayor, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mister Caulfield on the items? Ms. Moss, Councilmember Moss.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, Mister Caulfield, what time is that event for the Boys and Girls Club? Do you have that?
You Deputy Mayor, if you could give me a moment, please. It's, um, seven P M, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
Any other, thank you. Any other questions for Mister Caulfield? Well, thank you, Mister Caulfield. Uh, we now will turn to council comments. How about Mister Branstad? We start with you.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor, uh, going on forward. Uh, I, I, I did want to take note of the fact that we've, uh. Were that, uh, last week, uh. Mister Bunam Han passed away, uh, who was. Oh. For many, many years, uh, uh, a leading. Member of the business community, particularly in the international business, uh, district. Where the. The stores and, and businesses that he fostered were some of the early flagship. Efforts that, uh. Resulted in the international district being the, the draw for folks from around, uh. The region to come and, 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 and be in Lakewood. Um, so on. Very sad to have him pass on, although his family is going to continue to be a. An active contributor to the vitality of the community. And Mister Mayor, I, I would like to ask the city staff to. Um, bring forward for council consideration either an ordinance or a. Resolution. Adopting and designating the Oregon White Oak as the official tree of the city of Lakewood. I think, um. You know, in nineteen ninety-nine, uh, the city designated the, uh. A camellia as a, the city flower. But in the ensuing two decades, we haven't made any similar type designations of other things that. Go towards reflecting, uh. History and things to do that. And I just note that the, the Oregon White Oak, uh, does reflect. Elements of our history, uh, as a, as a prairie going back, uh. For a, a long time in prior to European American settlement where, uh. Uh, Native Americans were, were, were here, uh, and, and tending to, to the prairie that's here. And we do have various ordinances that, uh. Uh, recognize the significance of the Oregon White Oak and. Uh, have specified some unique, uh, provisions, uh, regarding it. Uh, and I would note that the very first. Funded piece of public art that the city did. Um, were, were actually, uh, oak leaves, which are, uh. They're at the, uh, Kendrick side of the overpass going over to the Lakewood Station. Um, and, uh. And, and most recently, we've had numerous citizens that have commented to us on the value of these trees. Um, within neighborhoods. And they, uh, these oaks, uh, in fact are a prominent feature and can be seen. And appreciated throughout the city. So I think that would be. Be an appropriate action for us to do. And if we could get an ordinance or a resolution for consideration. Of possibly on April eighteenth, which is our meeting, it is just prior to Arbor Day, which is gonna be on, uh. Uh, April twenty-ninth this year. I think that would be something appropriate to do. So that's all that, th- those are my only comments today, uh, Mister Mayor.
And it appears, uh, Councilmember Farmer may have a question on that point since it was brought up for consideration by the council. Ms. Farmer?
I would love to support the idea, um, and, and see it move forward for consideration. I also wanted to point out that the common name for the Oregon White Oak is the Gary Oak. For those who are still maybe listening.
I- is this something, um. I'm thinking of timing. I'll defer to Mister Caulfield, but is this something that perhaps might be an outgrowth of the ultimate recommendations from the Ad-Hoc Tree Committee? As part of maybe a, a larger August. Resolution, or would you prefer to have earlier consideration? For Arbor Day, perhaps?
I would like to leave it to the council. Let's. I don't know.
From a staff perspective, Mister Caulfield? Yeah, I, I'm not sure how much. Staff time that might take to get before the council for review, perhaps likely on a study session agenda first, right, in the future?
Um, well, Mayor, to, you know, resolution. As Councilmember Branstad has proposed, you know, does, won't take very long to pull together or just need to make sure that. You know, we have it properly worded and the whereas is and things like that, and, and I would recommend that it be a resolution. Um, that's typically how this body has, um, done things like that in the past, cause it's not a law. Um, which an ordinance focuses on, but we could, you know, we could have that done. Um, I don't think I could have it done for March seventh for consideration, but. Later in March or April, um, April eighteenth, as Councilmember Branstad suggested, we could certainly be ready. Uh, for that point and, um. And, and we could have it for your review, the preceding study session as well.
Got it. You know, the only re- and that would be fine by me, uh, if it's the council's desire. My only thought about an August timeframe, not to delay anything, but as we recall, the. Public art piece to the, uh, the plaza is. Allegedly going to be done at some point in August. And there was some comment from the Arts Commission, uh, with regard to their desire to see us perhaps light up. As part of that entrance work to light up the oaks at that location. And that might be a kind of a nice opportunity to do it all, to recognize and pass a resolution. Have the placement of the public art and actually ha- have a really nice opportunity to. Embrace and utilize some of those funds to light up the oaks in that particular area is a really nice entrance to the city. But I'll throw that out there. Mister Branstad and then Ms. Farmer.
Mister Mayor, you know, I think, um. Picking opportunities to do. Things multiple times during the year. That are, uh, 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 to, to, that, 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 to build a community is a. So, you know, while I prefer to, uh, perhaps to. Have each of those particular items separate, where in August that it's focusing on the, the new public art.
Sure.
And, and I mean, this thing, um, I think Arbor Day is a, uh. Appropriate thing to do this, and I would not wanna particularly tie this designation to. Anything that's in the, in the, in the tree ordinance, which is a ti- entirely different set of.
Got it.
Uh, uh, of, 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 of. Matters, uh, that relate to the tree canopy in, in the city.
That makes sense to me. Ms. Farmer?
Councilmember Branstad took the words right out of my mouth. I love. The idea of, uh, doing these at separate times and, um, the, the actions would get, uh, separate publicity, separate support. And we have, uh, even more opportunity than to, um, to honor the Gary Oaks in, uh, in the city.
Sounds great. Okay, Mister Caulfield, it sounds like we have some direction on that and, uh. Consensus. Alright, thank you. So next, I'll turn to Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I don't have anything to report.
Great. Uh, Councilmember Bokey.
Okay, I'm there. Uh, first of all, and I'll let, I'll let, uh, Councilmember Anderson s- speak a little more because he was also on the call tonight. With a joint meeting between, uh. The Heritage, uh, Group and, uh, Parks and Recreation Board. And I think it went very well. It was a very robust discussion. It was mainly about the, uh. The naming. And changing how we're gonna do that because after our, our, our. Last go-around, I guess, uh, there was, there was general consensus, I think, here on the council. As well as in some other, uh, areas of city government that we needed to relook at those. And they, and they had a nice discussion, uh, surrounding that tonight. Uh, I do have a question for the city manager I should have asked you, and I think I've, maybe I've just lost, lost track of it, so I apologize. What is the status? Of. The trail that was supposed to be between Gravely Lake Drive and Tillicum? Wasn't that part of the whole building out the? The, uh. Interchanges there in Tillicum, and now that they're done. When are we expecting that?
The interconnector road you're referring to?
Yes.
Councilmember.
Cause I got asked about it by somebody and I, and I forgot, I keep forgetting to ask you, so.
Yeah, Councilmember Bokey, uh, that is part of the. I-five JBLM corridor improvement project, and, uh, so they've broken it down into different parcels. And, um, so that, that connector. Uh, road is expected to be, um, completed, which will be actually the pedestrian bike trail. Um, is expected to be, um, underway. It could be twenty-twenty-three. Um, but probably twenty-twenty-four, um, is what they're looking at as far as construction. Um, however, for, uh, vehicles, the vehicle component has already been completed because there are now standalone lanes. That connect the Gravely Lake Drive. Interchange with, uh, the new North Thorn Lane Change, both north and south. So what's left is the pedestrian bike path. Um, that will be in between where, uh, the, the golf course is and where the sound transit. Property is, and, um, however, that pedestrian. Bike trail will also be built to a standard to be able to accommodate emergency vehicles. Um, but again, the. The primary purpose is for pedestrian bikes and, uh.
So we're looking at twenty. Twenty-three or twenty-four?
That's, that's correct, Councilmember.
Okay, thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Councilmember Farmer.
I was very pleased over the weekend that two individuals stepped up to, uh, put their names in the hat for the last two spots on the ad hoc. Committee to, uh, advise us on our tree preservation code, and both of those, uh, one is living in Springbrook and one is living in Tillicum. So they cover the two CDBG eligible census tracts, and that will be before the council. Um, on March seventh, I believe.
And that's all I have.
Very good. Mister Anderson.
Yes, as Mister Volki mentioned, we had Parks, Joint Parks and Recreation, and they'll have board meeting. Reviewing the naming policy was almost exclusively the, the topic of discussion. And they are moving forward with providing some. Details to suggested changes, the most notable of which will be some sort of petition process to reach a, some. Indication of broad community support before the, it triggers the. Essential, essentially the requirement of, of the committee and, and the city council to. Observe the process. Where to come on that. Second, some news today on modifications to last year's. House and Senate bills that limited police activity. You know, the House and, so I forget the, I think it's twenty thirty seven, House passed twenty thirty seven. With a margin of over eighty positive votes. That only included a provision regarding use of force. Changes and did not have anything including, included with respect to pursuit. The pursuit bill in the House died. Senate Bill fifty-nine nineteen, which was originally filed as a stopgap if the House didn't do anything. Includes both a use of force provision that allows, for examples, to, to stop a detainee. And, but it also includes a pursuit provision which would allow the use of reasonable suspicion as a basis for pursuit under certain conditions. That would enhance, I would say, called the historic limitations that for public, general public safety. Surprisingly, that got both the hearing and scheduled for executive session. The hearing was today. I assume that were parties on both sides testifying. And the executive session was scheduled for the twenty-fourth. So that's a bit surprising that that's being moved forward. In the House as briskly as it is, and we'll see. That's all I had. Oh, yeah, I, I have four maple trees in my yard that are over a hundred years old. They're much better looking than Gary Oaks. And their habitat for any number of species and, and they're, I. I'm, I'm afraid they'll be missed if the Gary Oak is adopted as the city tree. That's all.
I guess perhaps we can branch out on various tree species in the city of Lakewood. And with that, we turn to the Birthday Woman of the Year, Deputy Mayor Mary Moss. Happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Must be singing.
Yeah, yeah, we can pass that. It's okay. But I do appreciate it. I hear you guys. I feel the love. Thank you. But I do want to pass on some compliments that I've gotten that for the Public Works Department. They're extremely excited that this Tillicum Boulevard is open again. And I wanted to make sure that I pass that on, so. But I, and I, I did attend the Asia-Pacific Culture Celebration at Cobble Park Technical College on Saturday. It went really well. It was extremely packed. They really gonna have to find a new venue to hold their events because it was, it was just too full. It was elbow room. Sitting, walking, even the, the booths were all jammed together, so. They need a larger event, but it went really well. Lots of the dignitaries were there and a lot of different. Venues that were offering up different types of booths and stuff, so it was wonderful. I enjoyed it and I. Sorry you wasn't there, Mister Mayor, but I was appreciated the opportunity. Thank you.
Absolutely. It was my early birthday present to you.
Oh, thank you. You can hold those, you know.
There'll be, there'll be many more, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Mister Anderson, you had an alibi?
No, I, I have one more, one more item just for council members to think about, maybe staff to think about too. The, if you drive down any state highway, most notably I five, five twelve. Et cetera, you will, seven oh five, you will notice that they're starting to look like Seattle alongside piles of garbage. The state isn't picking it up. There are a variety of reasons for that. One of the significant reasons is that they fired four hundred plus. Workers and they don't have anybody to drive trucks to pick it up, so they suspended picking it up. It, it reflects negatively on us and brings our neighborhood down. If, if there's a, a way we can be. Innovative and take some initiative or shame the state into doing their job. It, it would be appreciated. I've gotten a lot of comments from folks that it looks, it looks like it's trashy because it is, so. Anyway, that's it.
Very good. Any other comments for the good of the order? I only had a, a couple of, of comments. I did have the chance to attend the General Assembly by the Pierce County Regional Council last week where we did. Receive the Well City Award and much of that, of course, goes to. The thanks to our staff and to city manager and leadership for. All the good work that goes into making sure the city does well and deserves such an award, which city employees earned here in this case, so thank you for that. And other than wishing Deputy Mayor Moss a happy birthday, I just wanted to express. Again, thanks to Mister Kuprieva for the, the business showcase. I think that's a wonderful way to. Exhibit good things that are happening in the city, and there was a comment tonight about the, the BIPOC businesses in the city. We have a lot. And perhaps we can post those figures on the city website, maybe adjacent to the information about the business showcase, because I do believe that. We have featured other BIPOC businesses and we have obviously more to feature because so many of them have done so much good work here, including. Buhan and the Buhan Market. Mister Branstadter mentioned earlier this evening, the passing of, of Buhan is a sad. Sad thing for not just his family, but certainly the city family, because they did yeoman's work in. Cleaning up and making the International District really what it is today, and if. Most of you have gone down there, but if you go down there and enjoy H Mart and some of the other wonderful restaurants that are owned by. Those Korean and, and other business owners, it, it's fantastic. It is a draw for the city and something that we can all be very proud of, so. I know that we have invested five hundred plus thousand dollars with the county to enhance the BIPOC accelerator to ensure that more. Of our minority and BIPOC communities have an opportunity to grow their businesses. It's, it is something for us to be very proud of, so. We can do some featuring of that on our website and pick a few of the select folks from the International District for the next. Couple of business showcases down the road. That would be fantastic. Other than that, I think that's all we have for tonight, and I told Deputy Mayor Moss we would let her off early so she could go celebrate. With many friends of her choice, and she has a large, large stable of friends that she can enjoy her birthday with, so. Thanks again.
You all. Good night.